Protect and the volunteers, just be with them tonight. Guide and direct the leaders of this nation as they deal with it in order to be with us and we take up the business of the city in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. I'm looking to my right to make sure we have everything under control with IT. Are we good? Almost. What you guys want to talk about? Let's see. I did trivia, yeah. How many ribs are there in a human body?
I do know that now, twenty-four.
Really? Eric, you were wrong.
Both sides or is that one side?
Twelve on each side. My mom broke ten ribs. Last week, so.
But she is the toughest woman alive.
She honestly is, so, yeah.
So, when she said ten ribs, I was like, do we have ten ribs? But apparently we do, we have twenty-four. And other piece of trivia, it's Mr. Franklin's birthday. Happy birthday, Mr. Franklin. I'm not going to sing to you, no one wants that. And I'm running out of trivia, folks. Here we go.
We aren't digitally voting, so we could go to citizen participation while they're working on it.
Perfect. I would like to open this up for citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to something that is not on the agenda, please approach the podium and you will be given five minutes to speak. And I see no one approaching the podium for that purpose, so we will close citizen participation. We will move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Moving on to the boards, commissions, and committee schedules, we have a city council meeting next week?
Next week.
Next week, August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Board of Adjustments meeting, September second. City Council meeting again, September seventh. And then planning and zoning on September thirteenth. We have no old business or tabled items, so I'd like to plunge into new business and.
ESPN's on.
Item number three on your agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-one dash fifty-five by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving the annexation of approximately ninety-one point five-five acres, located at sixty-five forty-two West US Highway sixty and adjacent right-of-way.
Thank you, ma'am. We have Ms. Haynes here to speak about the, the proposed ordinance, ma'am.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. The City of Republic's Builds Department received a voluntary annexation application from Wilson's Valley LLC.
See, for the annexa-
Hello.
For the annexation of approximately ninety-one point five-five acres of land located at sixty-five forty-two West US Highway sixty and adjacent right-of-way. The City of Republic's sanitary sewer service is available on the property and water is available adjacent to the property directly to the west. The subject parcel is compact and contiguous with the city limits of Republic as the subject parcel is surrounded by properties located in the city to the west. The annexation, if approved by City Council, will effectively zone the parcels A-one agricultural and M-one light industrial. As the property currently has split zoning in the county, fifteen point seven acres of light industrial and seventy-five point eight-five of agricultural. This is in accordance with City Code Section four-three-five dot zero-one-zero dot B. Staff does believe the annexation of the subject property is consistent with the city's adopted plans and enjoys immediate access to municipal services. We are recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, I have no concern with the annexation, but I do have a question for legal. Aren't annexations usually preceded by a public hearing first?
You should have a public hearing first, yes.
Did I get the public? I was going to actually, you know what?
We can do that for the second read.
I mean, I just, I want to make sure that that's okay. I just want to make sure we don't miss a step that would be with the development, except there's no opposition to it. There's a place that would give Mr. Stinger and anyone that might be opposed the opportunity to speak, so I don't know if that's been published, if we have to, if that changes anything.
It has been published.
It was published in the newspaper, right?
But there would be a public hearing tonight?
There should be. Typically, we do have a public hearing right before the ordinance is read, which is where I speak.
So I missed that, that was not on the agenda, so that's my fault for not catching it, but it was published?
It was published in the newspaper, yes.
Are there any other places that we're supposed to publish it?
No, that's the only place we publish annexations.
I say we go ahead and start a public hearing.
So can we, I'd say, then my question would be, could we go ahead and just add that to the agenda since it was already there?
Yes.
And I would ask that there be a motion to add that to the agenda in a motion and a second and a vote, and then go ahead and do the public hearing, just so that we don't delay the process.
I agree totally. So I would accept a motion and a second to go forward with a public hearing on twenty-one dash fifty-five.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. As this was published in the newspaper at, in accordance to Missouri law and our own ordinance and charter, I think we are valid to go forward with a public hearing, so I would like to open it up for a public hearing. If there are any citizens here wishing to speak in favor of this, please approach the podium and speak now.
Hello, my name is Stu Stinger. I'm at fifty-fifty-one South National in Springfield, Missouri. I represent the developer of the proposed tract here, Wilson's Valley LLC. Really here to introduce ourselves, my sister Stephanie. We're a family development company out of Springfield, and this would be our, our first major development in Republic. We propose to annex the ninety-one acres in and then bring forth later preliminary plat to you guys to plan and zoning in City Council at a future date. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions from council? Seeing none. Well, thank you very much for coming and we're excited to work with you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this public hearing?
Hello, my name's Ricky Haas with Olson, representing the property owner as well. Will be helping out with the annexation and rezoning. Rezoning will be coming after this hopefully, so I'm happy to help answer any questions as well. Address is five-fifty East St. Louis, Springfield, Missouri.
You knew I was going to ask that, didn't you?
Yeah.
I forgot it. No, no, you're great. Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
No questions, since we've already approved the second read, that's where I was going to talk about it. Stu, I just appreciate, we've worked together and discussed the development in Republic for two years now. And so I just thank you for your investment and your consideration to do business in Republic, and we look forward to doing that work and helping navigate through the process. There's a lot going on out in that particular area, and so looking forward to working with you on that. Appreciate the work that you all, Ricky, everybody, your sister, the family business, so thank you for your investment and consideration in Republic.
Thank you. So, is there anyone wishing here to speak against this? Seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing, and then we're going to continue on with item number three on the agenda. I'm going to say, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to that particular ordinance? Perfect. Seeing none. Please remember that this is a first read. If you have any questions, get with staff, and I appreciate you allowing us to call an audible there. Moving on to item number four, this is a public hearing, and I'd like to open a public hearing for the purposes of setting the twenty-twenty-one property tax levies of the City of Republic, Missouri. The way this public hearing will be conducted is exactly like the last one. I will open it up for people wishing to speak in favor of it, then I will open it up for people wishing to speak in opposition, and then I will close the public hearing. So at this time, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close it for that. Open it up for anyone wishing to speak against it. Seeing none, I will then close the public hearing and move on to item number five in the agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-one dash fifty-six by title only.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, setting the twenty-twenty-one property tax levies for the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, I understand that we have Mr. Brown here to speak on this issue from staff.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Larry Brown. I'm the acting finance director, well, the finance directors on maternity leave. So I've met a few of you before. I helped you out four or five years ago, so I'm back again for a little while.
Welcome back, sir.
I've, I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed working here at the city. I have some information on the tax levy I'd like to briefly go over with you. As far as the, the tax levy for twenty-twenty-one, the city has three levies. They have a general operating levy, they have a park and recreation levy, they have a lights levy for the, for the streetlights. As far as this year compared to last year, last year we had a levy for the general operating of about point four-one-one-nine. This year, we're going to be able to take that to four-oh-nine-five, basically because the Hancock Amendment limits how much you can increase your rate every year based on comparing this year's property tax valuations with last year's. So the difference in revenues to the city as far as the regular general operating, last year they were around nine-hundred thousand. This year they'll be about nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand. As far as the park and recreation levy, prior year was point one-one-one-zero, it's going to go to point one-one-zero-four. That basically means you will get an additional probably twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue for, for that levy. Street lighting levy, it's point zero-six-thirty-four, it's going to point zero-six-three-zero, but you will, because of the increased valuation, get about an additional five thousand, bringing that up to a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars revenue in that. The levy changed from last year to this year. At, last year we had point five-eight-six-three, now we're going to be able to levy point five-eight-two-nine, a drop of point zero-zero-three-four. Again, this came from the Hancock Amendment back, oh, twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, when you were limited exactly how much you could increase. The property tax values for the city have increased last year to this year twenty million dollars. That's a nine percent increase. However, because of the Hancock Amendment, you're only allowed to compare last year's actual with this year's actual and not count the new construction or the new territory that you've annexed in. So basically, the difference between the Hancock numbers last year and this year, we've had an increase of about two percent, about four-point-five million dollars. There's a big, big difference there, but again, you, you do have limits on that. As far as total revenue, last year to this year, property taxes, last year you received one-point-three, around one million two-hundred-seventy-two thousand, something like that, and this year it's going to be about one million three-hundred-and-forty, an increase of about eighty-five thousand dollars. That's pretty much, other than the assessed valuation totals, last year we had two-hundred-and-twenty-six million, this year we have two-hundred-and-forty-seven million. Big increase, a lot of growth. So that's, that's just briefly telling you what, I didn't mean to throw too many numbers at you at one time, but that does tell you, you know, compared to, your, your levy will continue to go down as your property tax values go up, just because of the limits that are placed on them.
Thank you, sir. Do we have questions from council?
No questions, but I did not pay Larry to say that part about the Hancock Amendment. But I just want to state that, this is just a, you know, I, I hope people, and it's very complicated to see, but I, I hope people will look at our levy and see that what we were sharing in the ballot measure and what he just stated is very accurate, that we are growing, and people would ask us, with all this growth and where's this money, and because those levies and our valuation went up, it really just balances it out. So like some of these developments that generate a quarter million dollars in property tax, what he just shared is we're only recognizing about fifty thousand dollars in total. So it's not like when we add more buildings that it builds our, a, a coffer. It really, what it's doing is leveling that tax for what started at seventy-two cents, I believe is the levy, is now dropped again below even what we presented to the voters a couple of weeks ago, and so, yeah, I did not pay him to say it, but I, I really do appreciate that. I'm like, I'm just glad it kind of validates what we were, what we were sharing, so.
Yeah, it, it doesn't sound like, the logic doesn't sound, you know, like it would, would continue to go down, but it does.
It's a different story, a different politics, so I, we'll, we'll leave that discussion for another day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please remember that this is a first read, so if you have any questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number six on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-one dash fifty-seven by title only.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, vacating a general utility easement located on property owned by MM Highway LLC, also known as Heart of America Park in the City of Republic, Missouri.
Laura and I arm-wrestled over who was going to talk about this. For those of you keeping track of, you know, city council meetings, you might notice that this was the same thing that was passed in two thousand seventeen. However, the mayor and the clerk, not Laura and I, didn't sign it at the time, and the easiest way, according to Green County, was to just put it up for another vote. So this has already been passed eight to zero in the past. This is a scribbler's error that we're trying to fix, and this is the easiest way to fix it. So if you have any questions, you can ask Laura or I, but that's, we're just looking for new signatures. So, any questions? Seeing none, please get with staff if you have any before the next meeting. Moving on to the other business, item number seven, this is twenty-one dash R dash thirty-three, a resolution, I'm sorry, did you want to talk about that, Laura?
You could read it first.
Okay, well, I meant the other one.
Oh, no, the other, you're good.
Yeah, like, we're good.
You did a great job.
Perfect, thank you. Twenty-one dash R dash thirty-three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the renewal of the agreement with Bank of Missouri to provide depository and banking services. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-one dash R dash thirty-three.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have been banking with Bank of Missouri since twenty-fourteen. We have revised our contract twice since that time, and the contract expired in December of twenty-twenty without anybody noticing that. What we are asking to do is to extend that contract until December twenty-twenty-two to allow us time to go out for bid appropriately and give us enough time to switch over banks if the bid did go to a different bank at that point. We are happy with the services we've received with Bank of Missouri, but it is appropriate to go out for bid once we reach that point.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from council? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it directly for a vote, and that's what I'll do. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda, this is twenty-one dash R dash thirty-four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to approve the contract for interim city attorney Damon Phillips pursuant to Republic City Charter. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-one dash R dash thirty-four.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and so as you all know that we are working with an interim city attorney, and so we have actually conducted interviews as of a couple of weeks ago, and at this time, really what I want to do is wait and kind of exercise a little bit more time to evaluate the position, what the needs are of the future, and quite frankly, whenever I get to my administrator's report, I believe you'll understand what the priorities of the city are and just making, making sure we take our time to make the right selection and who we bring in to do those services, and so I'm anticipating probably bringing that back up in January, more on a permanent basis, but in the interim. Damon is doing us a fantastic job. Mike, an associate of the same firm, has helped us already in, you know, Damon needs a vacation, I think it's his first one in two years. But Damon is doing a fantastic job, but at the same time, as we enter into our budget cycle and things that were going on, I'm not saying that the development world is slowing down. It's actually probably speeding up, but we're getting good service. I believe it's, it's a cost-effective measure for us to do, and so I'm wanting to extend this through at least the end of the year, and then we'll reevaluate it and hopefully we'll make a selection towards the direction that we want to go, because we want to consider what the needs are of the staff or the council and the direction we're going before filling the position and doing so in, in somewhat of haste. I just want to take a little bit of time and make the right decision. And actually, it's not my decision, it's, it's an appointment, but I try to do my best to help facilitate that discussion for the mayor and the council, so. Recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. Questions from council?
David, have we had a lot of interest in the position?
We had quite a bit of interest, not a lot of interest, not a lot of what I would consider municipal experience, and so some we have, but it's finding the right fit, plus the, the timing is just very difficult, just to say where do you, where do you come in to where the season of the city we're in, and when's the right time to insert that position versus like right now, it's a bit, like I said, when we get into the discussion of where we're at working on stuff, what's the right time and maybe outsourcing it is probably the most proficient use, especially with Damon's expertise and ability to know municipal law and having access to his resources and the resources in their firm. It just seems like we have a multitude of different resources, and then community development, or the Builds Department always get, I still have to learn that, but they're actually looking at possibly doing some outsourcing on just planning and zoning-related issues and getting specialty expertise in those issues to help expedite the review process a little bit in areas where municipal law just gets, there's a little bit of a struggle. And so it's not that there was anything wrong or difficult, it's just as we're transitioning as an organization, the traditional model of utilizing a city attorney may not be the same, and it's kind of the traditional way we do it. We're not looking to do the same thing we've always done. And we just want some time to evaluate that comparatively to the other things we're doing. So we've had a lot of interest, which is good, it's just finding like, okay, but that, how does that fit with what we do? It's nothing against their expertise or talent, it's just I'm not sure how that would apply for us. We had ballpark, how many do we have? Twenty?
Local, regional?
Uh, all over, from outside the, from outside the area, some local, quite a few local.
Thinking outside the box, good, huh?
You have to, because we have to evolve with what the needs of the development world, the community are, and measure those against the volume of what we take in every day. So like, for example, in my office, the need for legal representation is going to be development-related a lot, where the planning and zoning staff may need it. You may have bids, but a lot of what we do, we've created processes that we've solidified at this, at this body, especially with PDD ordinances and things, processes over the last five years, we've changed and evolved, that we've created templates, not to take away from the legal profession, because a lot of those templates have been developed, and we now insert the language, and so as we begin to evolve and talk about CIDs and creating development opportunities and what those resources are, it may just evolve to where you've got different levels of specialties that we need, and it's hard to find all tied up into one. And without going into great detail, this council is aware that, you know, the number of places we reached out to to reach out for different environmental expertise, sales tax expertise, property planning, litigation, so there's, there's just a prosecution. And so finding all that in one package is, is, is possible, but just being outside the box, yes. I'm just, I, we're always going to strategize before we just jump into it, I think. I know, sorry.
No, it's all right.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just curious.
That took seven minutes. Blah, 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 blah.
Short answer is outside, outside the box.
Outside the box. Whatever that was, yes.
All right. No one asked him any other questions. It's all right. So.
Sorry, guys.
Blame me, Jim.
As this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, and that's what I'd like to do. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Just please tell Damon it went well. Excellent, thank you. Item number nine on the agenda, a resolution of, this is twenty-one dash R dash thirty-five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to request allocation of the local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-one dash R dash thirty-five.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second?
You're afraid to say Mr. Cameron, I know.
I'm, I'm wondering if there's anybody up, no, I'm just, go ahead, go ahead, go. You want me to talk about it? I'll talk about it.
Yeah, so this is the American Rescue Plan Act, and I will tell you, this came out several months ago. There was a lot of different items that said the city was to receive three-point-one-two million dollars. I've been asked, you know, where did that fit? So there was no real guidance until a week ago that told us specifically that it had to be used. There was speculation, I met with the auditors in March or April, or the one we did, or June, whenever we did the audit, and pretty much they were still waiting for the guidance. So a week ago it came out, after the official guidance that we were done, we as a staff met, provided, created the list of what we believe that the, what do they call it, the ARPA Act allowed for, and so after staff compiled this information, thanks to Laura, we pulled together a meeting with our independent auditors, KPM. What I wanted to do was talk to them and say, well, okay, well now, when you receive federal funds and you have to audit those funds on our behalf, in looking at this list, do you believe that there's anything in there that would not specifically qualify or that was somehow we'd have to return or we'd be found, done it in, in, I guess, out of step? Because there were some parts, I'm like, I just don't get it. I don't understand how that actually applies to what we're saying is going to do. And so we talked about those things and it basically have included it here for you, which includes a two-hundred thousand dollar IT upgrade, firewall VPN upgrades to include the wastewater treatment plant, keyless entry updates, and watch guard server updates for additional police officers. So basically, we had IT upgrades as a broad statement, and he was like, okay, well, it has to be associated with public safety. So why so specific is because it was to meet specific guidance that was provided. There's seven hundred thousand dollars in there for parks, three hundred thousand for J.R. Martin improvements where COVID-nineteen safe drive-through events occur. So basically, when we did the boogie bash, the, thank you, Easter egg hunt, where they drove through and recreated an environment. This was also, I believe, in the citizen survey, the number one request of the community was to create this drive-through access through the J.R. Martin Park, so basically because it was available and it met the criteria, that's why it went to probably the, the forefront here of three hundred thousand dollars. And then we were also allowed to recover lost revenue from our programming, so not less, lost revenue in sales tax, because that, that's something we could not recover, but something that, like the programming that the parks do, if you look in your budget, you will just see a litany of programs and revenues that they generate from those programs. So basically what they did is compiled that. It can be used for purchase of land as well or recovering. It is not a, it's not a restricted cash account that the voters approved through the two measures we've got. Then three hundred thousand dollars for ADA compliance for handicap access, public court, HVAC updates and PPE. This has all been somewhat lumped together into a broad topic, because originally we had this itemized out, but we're like, well, what if the HVAC systems cost a hundred-and-fifty thousand? The PPE costs seventy. So this has not been necessarily itemized out based upon budgeting, it's just we have to provide something that says this is in general terms what it would be. The big one, which was interesting, a lot of these were all to me a little bit of a stretch to get to what the, the purpose, but it, it is what it is. One point nine-two million for the McLean Lift Station. As you may or may not recall, we're doing, we're, we're required to do about thirty-six million dollars worth of improvements to our wastewater system to comply with a voluntary compliance, or AOC as we call it. We're working on an administrative order with DNR now. Our belief in this was considering the ballot measure, the rate increases that have to go into effect to pay for those infrastructure things in January, was to provide something back to the citizens that would at least help offset maybe their costs. I mean, thirty-six million to one point nine-two million, but to take the lion's share of these funds and almost well over half of it and provide it back to the citizens in something that directly or indirectly may help them, and we're considering whether or not to have to increase additional rates to pay for this. But the McLean Lift Station, in the original study, was about eight hundred thousand dollars. With the growth and development of the city, especially in the Brookline, Amazon, Convoy of Hope area, that project now has been moved up and is probably closer to a six million dollar upgrade, and so this one point nine-two does not, one point nineteen million does not touch it. But we are recommending the approval. There, and I will, I, I would be amiss, I don't see it in here. There is a provision that allows you to decline the funds as well, so there is a, there is a way. I think you have two choices to either support it or to reject the fund, so we're recommending that the community or the council approve the resolution to request these funds.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So you've been talking to the auditor, the auditor agrees this is an appropriate allocation of the funds that we're, we've got the stamp of approval that we're using correctly.
Yeah, that's the first thing. I just don't want him to come back and say, we owe three-point-two million because we did it somehow that was not in concert with the, the spirit of what they wanted to do, so he was the one providing a lot of guidance to say, there's nothing in there that concerned him.
Other questions from council? Mr. Clerk.
And so David, you said that, you know, this is kind of just a broad guideline. This still have, gives, allows us some flexibility if we need for maybe a little bit more in the lift station, if we decide we don't need so much for the IT upgrades.
Ye- yes, so if, say the IT upgrades are a hundred-and-twenty thousand, what, I, I will pretty much say that whatever we have left- Uh, whatever, I, I will pretty much say that whatever we have left. You, you're very familiar with our position on expiring debt really fast. Anything that we could do to help expire that versus just will be to try to draw it to that attention, so it most likely it would go to wastewater. The other thing to point out, whatever's on this list still has to meet our purchasing cri- purchasing criteria. Would be still subject to your awareness of the purchase because likely over fifty thousand still requires your approval.
Any other questions? Alright, seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it directly for a vote, which I would like to do. All those in favor and moving forward with this resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero, which puts us back to you.
I'm, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna, I would like to say I'm gonna be brief, but if there's a lot to share tonight. Um, we've done a lot in the last couple of weeks and I apologize in advance, uh, but it's hard to apologize for something that's very difficult in scheduling. So we've got you in here back to back to back weeks. To explain that is, we did not get the levy information, as you recall, we don't get the levy information. Until the last week, so when we set the calendar every year, we always. Just, we don't have the first meeting of the month, we just move them to the back, which leaves us in a position. Of, uh, having back-to-back meetings, but that's the only way we can meet state statute and not have you in here for so, for a Zoom meeting, uh, for just a few minutes. So, the census data, uh, came out, I'm not sure how many people have seen the census data at all. So it is official though, that the, uh, city population suggests our population is eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty. We still have not received official notification of this, even though there is guidance out there that tells us what that is. To put that in perspective, uh, we, we had a twenty-seven percent growth over the ten-year period. Uh, Nixa was at twenty-two, Ozark was at nineteen, Springfield at six, Green County at nine, and then the, the US as a whole was at seven. So, you know, we grew at twenty-seven percent, that's pretty, pretty substantial. Over a ten-year period, we're projecting twelve percent growth every year for the next five years, so. There's a, um, there's just a lot going on, but I just, I thought I'd share with you what the census data was, Mr. Franklin, you'd ask it one time if we knew what it was. And we said we would convey that as soon as we heard, so, um, very interesting data, we are growing, so I think this data suggests that we're growing. I know that our total number of residential units suggests that we're growing. Um, but there's just a lot going on and this, I think this, this is only just like kind of the beginning. And the one thing I want to draw attention to it is typically, we get funding based upon a re, an allocation from Green County. Uh, based upon the size of our community, so basically it grew, so the Parks Department will see an increase, the LEST. For law enforcement, the, the, a portion they get from the county will go up somewhat. We're going to talk about the motorfield sales tax, I asked Andrew to look into that information. But the one thing about it is, I was part of a similar situation back in Northwest Arkansas. When you're seeing this type of exponential growth and you have funding tied to it. There comes a point, especially if you're talking about a five-year growth trend, that there will come a point that it'll be advantageous for us to do a special census. To submit it, they do special censuses, I've done a special census before. Because it, if our allocation of the total growth is much more and we're losing a couple hundred thousand or three hundred thousand dollars a year. And it costs you two hundred thousand to create one. Over a five-year period, that's a lot of money you're leaving on the table for your community if you're not accurately assessing what your true number is, so. While two point seven percent is good, I would suggest probably the last several years has been, is what's really driven that number way up, so. Anyway, uh, the key takeaways, we grew by twenty-seven percent, expecting to grow by twelve percent. Infrastructure, infrastructure will have to grow, our infrastructure will have to grow to support it, so, uh. And it is and it will, which leads me to the ballot measure, so I just want to thank the community, um, was it two weeks ago today? The citizens got out and voted, the turnout was, was substantial for an August ballot. We was looking for a large turnout, hoping for a large turnout, just because we wanted the citizens to answer the question, to help consider the question. But just to put in perspective, there were over four hundred voters more in the August measure than there were in our April elections. So, I know, but this, because the school district had a measure, but we as a city had our mayor council member election, so those that voted in those positions. There are actually four hundred more people that showed up for the August measure for one question. And so I just want to thank the community for coming out and voting and demonstrating just overwhelming support for the measure. Because what it does is it allows for us now to begin to work on taking care of the public safety side in a robust way, so I just want to lay it out there, the. How the, the timeline and what that'll look like, the clerk has certified the results, Laura has submitted that to the state. In the meantime, there's a document that we fill out that we have to talk about what date that starts. And, and what they're doing in the process is notifying the businesses, uh, of the change in, in, or, uh, in the change of rate. And so hopefully I'm anticipating sometime by, uh, the defective date by nine and one, that we'll begin to receive receipts within ninety days of that, that's usually when that is, um. But, uh, it will be by, we will post the positions, um, like we said we were going to do, we will do the wage, the wage adjustments. And also we will deal, deal with the retirement benefit, pretty much in that order, posting the positions are just, is just going to take time. The resources, it's going to take the train to prepare, but the feedback. In the region and from just the law enforcement and public safety side, there's a lot of interest in being in Republic and so. That's exciting. I will say this, we will not deficit spend, so there will not be a spending until we receive money. And so I do not want to get into, like, get into haste and say, we're going to do this extremely fast. Um, this certainly changed the landscape for street projects you will see on. Next week or week after, help me. So we're going to be working on doing the, uh, the microseal job on Miller Road, those that drive Miller Road will understand, when you see grass growing in the cracks, that's a bad sign. And so that's been something that's been a, and. For those of us that are in public works or been in infrastructure and see that. And you're driving down that road and you look at the cost and the width of that thing, you're thinking, if we do not do something with this. It's going to deteriorate to the point that it's going to be almost negligent to the fact like. We got to do something that's going to cost millions to repair versus something where I believe this is going to be a, a new opportunity. Going there to do something that's very cost-effective to see how it will work, I think this will be a great demonstration. That we are keeping our promises to the community, that we would do road improvements as well as it freed up the money. We're also working on, and I, and I apologize, Laura, I'm sure you didn't get to my dictation, do you have it? So, awesome, so would you pull up, this is the Lynn and Hines roundabout. So basically we started working on the design on a maybe what if, hopefully this will take place. But this is one of the most dangerous intersections in town, this is the one that we hear a lot about. Is, uh, we're working with Anderson Engineering, you will see a contract coming before you to go ahead and proceed with this design. Uh, again, it's conceptual, there's still, we've got some things to do with right away, but. This is obviously the Walgreens intersection, uh, just before you get to the, uh, traffic light there, so. Those that have tried to cross that in the morning, uh, during the school.
Huh, it's great.
It's, it's a, yeah, it's a barrel of monkeys, um. So people avoid it, go to different places, just create problems elsewhere, but that's another one, um. We're just, we're picking up the discussion for sidewalks along Hines. Uh, I think the thing about it is to, to remember there are over four hundred and fifty lane miles in the city, oh, I think it's four hundred and eighty-four to be exact. Um, getting to every single one of them, huh? It is going up, so, there's been a lot of requests, like, when are we going to do this project or this project, there are a lot of them that are in queue. And so, we're, we're not going to get to all those lane miles very fast, so we're going to get to the high-impact areas. First, to try to address those, and again, in every single one of those projects, we will post the sciences, keeping our promises. Talking about what we're doing with the, the, the phone, or the, the funds. Main and one seventy-four, we're going to hear a lot about it because schools getting ready to start back up, this is the week that I hear about Main and one seventy-four. It's important to remember that Main and one seventy-four, that's an intersection between the, the city and MoDOT. That will have to be some sort of cost share application, that will be a fifty-fifty match of some sort. This is not, that, that intersection not, is not on MoDOT's radar at this time. But it is something that we need to work on and we will continue to look at, but. Like, hey, when are we going to get to Main and one seventy-four, it's going to be a collaborative effort and it's going to take some time. I will tell you that we meet with the school, we provided an alternative design for them, they were actually looking to buy some land. It did not come to fruition, it's not because they didn't do, do it, it's just going to develop. And so we're going to continuously work on that, but we're going to hear about, you know, when are we going to fix Main and one seventy-four? We got Hines and Z's, yeah, Hines and ZZ roundabout is something that we're talking about doing at the, as well. Uh. Quiet zones, we're going to pick up the discussion of quiet zones, this is something that's been in, uh, coming to my office for, ever since I got there. Ideally, you know, I'd like to say that it's in the, in the overall scheme of the work we got going on. Um, it's the biggest project, it's not, but this is something the community has said. Uh, we heard from, we did a survey, I believe seventy, seventy percent of the people supported a quiet zone, so what we're going to do. Is, uh, is, I've asked staff to engage an engineering firm that helped us with the original railroad study that was for MoDOT. And BNS, BNSF that was coming through, and so, um. Engage an engineering firm, do public hearings, do public meetings, get feedback, because. The one thing of, at, work with the school district, the one thing about the quiet zones, if you remember, we'll bring it all back up. There has to be a designated median a hundred feet past the intersection. So when I put that in perspective and you look at Main Street. And you're going towards Casey's, heading towards one seventy-four, a hundred feet of extension. Will pretty much cross out that road that you can turn left when you cross over the, so, some of these things. May or may not be able to be done in certain areas, whereas it may be done in others. The other portion of a, of, of the quiet zone, of study that, revisiting it, is it may call for the closure of some. So why we're going to be doing the public meetings, allowing people to communicate and discuss it, is for them to do the review, meet with the community. Provide drawings and cost estimates. And then basically leave that for a decision for the council to make, based upon the community's feedback and the support for it, again, the survey said seventy percent s- support. Will the support still be there whenever we have to go down there and start its ride in, ride out, and it may affect the business? I do not know that, so that's why we're going to be doing public meetings. Kind of like we do with the ballot measure, we'll, we'll invite the, the community into the discussion, so. Okay, then with that. I'm going to move to the next one, so the next effort's on the MM highway, we have, we are working on the cost share application. Um, and so. DED has tentatively committed six point six million, what I mean by MM, I'm talking from Amazon to I forty-four. We're still working with Green County, waiting for a decision from them whether they're going to participate or not. Uh, I will be presenting before the state highway commission on September ninth. Um, about all the growth and development of the community, thanking them for their contribution, uh, to participate in the project. Uh, and but also talking about the needs of transportation in Republic, I will also tell you in that same discussion last week, I believe. I heard that MM was, or not MM, US sixty had been bumped to a higher elevation based upon traffic counts. Uh, as you know, we've had two fatalities on that section of highway this year. And so I do believe that that's going to start scoring, those that don't know, you score transportation projects in the area and that's how you get funded, so. Uh, that'll be, um. A big win if we can get that on the, on the calendar, so, uh, I'm going to skip to this other one, so I've provided you about there, that's only eleven minutes. So what I've provided you.
You think I'm keeping track?
No.
Alright, I'm not, I'm not, I'm listening, I'm learning.
But, I'm juiced about this one, because I love telling stories, I'm happy about where we're at, but. The ballot measure takes a lot of energy and a lot of effort, because. In the city, we had noted, we, we'd stated that the number one priority of the city in the trust edge, which someday we'll get to, working with the council on. This is if you have more than three priorities, you don't have priorities, well, I've just listed eight more, so I'm not really sure that that, I followed the rules of it. But, the public safety measure was the very issue that was holding us back, because. It wasn't that the officers, it was just dealing with that and them being short and us utilizing funds on anything else, whenever they're not being paid. And you don't have the resources to do it was a challenge, so we spent all of our resources, held off on a number of things that we could do. And what we needed to place our focus on, but I want to tell you where we're going now. And just in broad terms, we're going to get together, uh, but what I start with is our mission statement. Um, and we will, in the part of the, in the budget process, we will do an overview of these projects, I just want to give you just a. Snapshot of what the next ninety days look like and what we're ramping up to do, but we will be aggressively progressive, not Bernie Sanders progressive. Aggressively progressive through process relationships and trust. What I mean is, we're always going to charge the hill to be the one step better than where we're at today. So that's about process improvement, building relationships and building trust. Why we go out there and put the keeping our promises, we got to continue to build trust in the community, so listen, we told you this is what we were going to do. To grow together by always doing the right thing at the right time for the right reason, so. While it may look like everything looks right, it's not the right time, it's not the right reason, so. We're, we're going to constantly evaluate or measure ourselves a gap, uh, about that, so. My number one priority is leading cast vision. My three priorities as an individual are always to lead, to plan, to communicate. And so, that's what we're going to stop and focus and doing. Meeting with staff in October, I'll meet with them to go over the vision for the city for the next twelve months. Or whatever, six months, but I don't think it ever lasts more than ninety days, but at least that's what we had in October last year. It lasted till what, March, so, but we will get together and talk about those things. Uh, but we, the priorities of the city right now is to execute a new administrative agreement, so now that public safety, not that they're out of the way, and Jamie, Lieutenant Burks. We will execute the funding of, of those programs. But we're now back to a very large issue that faces our community, which is MoDNR with the wastewater treatment plan, as you know, we're under a compliance order with them from two thousand and eleven. We need to execute that, a new agreement, looking forward to getting that done. Legal counsel, so the whole time while the, these measures are going on, we're working with legal counsel out of Kansas City to help us draft this order, so we've been going back and forth with DNR to provide you an order that you can. Uh, see and agree to, and looking forward to getting that executed. We've asked for some provisions in that order that, that allow us a little more time, COVID was not friendly to anyone, the cost of construction has gone up since we approved the first one. By what? Twenty-some percent, so basically our original plan of twenty million dollars for a wastewater plant goes up by, do the math, twenty percent, that's, that's an exponential change. So, it could have a negative impact and delay our ability, COVID's delaying our ability to construct, so. But I just want you to know that that is going to be a priority that is now something that we have to deal with. On a very tight timeframe, Andrew and I'll be traveling to Kansas City. September, for two days of a strategic planning on just our. Infrastructure alone on water and wastewater to get an action plan, that we do this step-by-step, very strategic. To make sure the city is not in a position that it was when it comes to the compliance order, that we position the city. Twenty years down the road to be stronger than what it was in two thousand and eleven, so, and even in the present. Uh, transportation, so I'm going to go really fast, MM five lane is nine million, MM three lane is twenty-six million. US sixty possible sixth lane, I do not have the estimate. MM to ZZ, which is going through the Stinger property, we're doing a traffic study for that now. Lynn and Hines, ZZ and Hines, sidewalk down Hines, complete the trail grant to Wilson's Creek National Battlefield. The Miller Road project, and there's several side streets that need immediate attention, I'm using Olive Street, those that know Olive will understand. It is a goat path that's full of street cuts, and so. I just want you to know that transportation infrastructure is now at the forefront of getting these things in front of you for bids to do those. If you just look at those top, or those number two and three, they represent probably close to seventy to a hundred million dollars. Over what, a five-year period that we're going to be spending in infrastructure improvements in our community. I wish I could say that was all funded without having to raise the rates, but we had to do that this last. Spring and, uh, deferred those to, uh, January one. Uh, create and present a new financial strategy to aggressively, number four. Uh, to aggressively and strategically allocate our funds, it's not monopoly money. This is what I'm going to say throughout the community, just because the ballot measure passed, just throwing money going, wow, it's a spending spree, it, it will not be that. We have to position our financial direction that's in the best, most appropriate way. And do that very, very strategically, not just quickly and lay that out of how we need to do, what comes first, what comes second. And again, we will not deficit spend to get that done, we won't borrow against the future to take care of today. So, as it comes in, we'll do that appropriately, what projects need to be done. Um, but, uh, our first steps must be calculated to yield maximum efficiency. So going out and issuing a bunch of debt on the general fund or in the public safety fund, it's going to take time, and so getting those staff members hired, getting them paid and getting the retirement benefit. That's it, I've had a ton of requests, I need this person, I need this position, I, you know, it's not a matter of saying no, it's like, let's strategically look at where we're positioned to do. And in fact, you could probably jump down to number eight or evaluate organizational structure, organizational management, do we have the resources? Do we have the process map to handle the growth and development, going from eighteen thousand to thirty thousand people is going to require resources to deal with that. Because we're not going to slow down and we're not going to go becoming competent in what we're doing, you have to have the same amount of, we're going to have to grow with the growth of the city, we're going to do that strategically. Um, facilities, funding for facilities specifically in parks and operational funding. As you know, the Parks Department is funded by a sales tax measure, that measure does come back up and we're going to have to strategically talk about. Doing a no sales tax, no tax increase to fund those projects to keep that momentum as well, so it's like. You can see there's just a lot going on. Um, fire station number three, paying off the debt of stations one and two. Again, strategically placing us, us in a position of a stronger financial position. Economic development, I will tell you that we're beginning the initial discussions with the developer, potentially on a two-hundred acre development site. Uh, along MM, and that's going to be another perk, opportunity for us to participate. Also, we just did one the other day for sixty acres, we're getting ready to bring it to you for a development agreement, there'll be adjacent right across from Amazon. So, a lot of that going on. Communication on steroids, I probably shouldn't use that term, but anyway, that's what I felt like it needed to be. I feel like our, our new PIA will start, start September twentieth and she's going to have a very busy plate. Jennifer Mayfield, I'm going to say it again publicly to you and Jared. You guys, and Jamie, even yourself, Lieutenant Burks, the work on the ballot measure. You guys handled it like complete rock stars and professionals, so I take nothing away, Jennifer's done a great job, but she'd like to get back to her day job. Because she's had to do that amongst, have a blast and the mud runs. And hopefully we'll have you out of the place where you don't have to do it anymore, but, um, start September twentieth. But I'm looking forward to pushing out internal and external communications, just everything that's going on, because we've, we've, there's a lot of development. But I think, you know, we want to make sure we do it very strategically, looking forward to the annual report, we're going to get that started pretty quick. But again, I'm not even gonna go back to evaluate number eight. I've already shared that. Why I share this is because I'm looking forward to really putting that together. We're gonna do a tour in um March again, March or I said, May. And do a bus tour again in May of next year along with the employee picnic. So we're already planning into twenty twenty-two of how we're going to be taking care of the things of the city. But why I share that with you is not to say we're busy. I just want you to know we're busy about the right things and it's focused on making sure we secure our future. We're not just trying to build it for the sake of building things, but we have to stay focused on what that is and what our mission, vision and values are. And it's about process, relationships, trust and doing these right things. Some of these are not the prettiest and people, I'd rather have my project first. These are the things that the people, I mean, they're a threat or a concern to the community, whether they know that or not. But that thirty-seven million dollars will help position the city at the wastewater plant uh and through our infrastructure very well. But these transportation projects, they're huge and they're critical for us as well. And so sometimes uh they're not the prettiest, but they are the ones that we need to focus on. But I just want you to know, I appreciate the staff, this mayor and the council for allowing us to uh lead this community through a very, very interesting season. Uh we're moving rapid. I love it personally because this is what motivates us to what we what we do. And I thank the staff for what that looks like because the best is truly yet to come. People have taken notice and people are asking how we do it. And I'm not saying that to brag. I just say it in a humble way that I think we've got a very successful model that works. And um but I think it starts right here with planning, uh leading and communicating with you. Because if you don't know what we're working on, it kinda like, kinda like, doesn't help trust. I'm not saying it's not there, but it's just something I hope to continue to build on our trust and uh get together and talk about it some more. And Mike, thank you for being here tonight.
You know, um Mike wanted to be quiet.
All right. That's all I have.
So I wanna say this in response to your report. I tease you about talking. Uh I appreciate it. I like the talking. And here's the thing, people are taking notice. And the reason they're taking notice is, and I don't think I'm, kick me if I do something wrong. Uh we're a government, right? But people are taking notice and it's because you're kinda running it like a business. You know, the thing that you didn't hit on that I, you said it once, but I circled it. It's not monopoly money. I mean, I think those of us that are in oversight here should actually be really happy to see that, that this this government is treating this like a business and we're not just spending money because it's fun. It's treating the people's money as the people's money. And that is something that I think we should be proud of. And that's why people are taking notice because we are doing the right things for the right reasons. And uh so thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the report.
You're welcome. All right. Uh reports from council.
Mr. Franklin. Mr. Mayor, I actually just had a question. Is the census data, is that available to the public yet or is that just something that's been?
That's a good question.
It is available to the public. I
It's really tricky. I can't find any data for cities less than five thousand, but cities over five thousand, the data is out there on the census website. So if that gives you a little bit of a volume answer, but under five thousand, the data is just not there.
So just at the the census website is where, okay. Thank you.
So is it not certified yet?
I I don't know.
Okay.
But it's clearly on there for cities over five thousand.
Anything else from council?
I have a question. I promised my nine-year-old daughter I'd ask a very important question. Are we allowed to have goats within city limits? She's like, Mom, don't.
This sounds like a legal question.
It's like, I don't know. I'll have to ask the crew.
Yeah, I I would have to look into that.
Can you look into that?
Yeah.
Miniature goats.
Yeah, if it's zoned ag and there's already livestock there, I think it gets to stay. If it's not zoned ag.
She wants a goat at her house.
I promise I'd asked, so. Little shock collar.
Do you know?
It would only be in agricultural zone districts where farming operations is permitted.
So, no.
Build a private fence and don't tell nobody.
That was my first thought. And then say sorry later.
Indoor goat.
I think the, I think the barnyard noises would probably give it away, but yeah, I knew the answer. I was like, I know what Karen's gonna say.
Ms. Paul, you had something?
I appreciate the staff that shows up and all the work that they do through the week. Appreciate David, but I appreciate Ryan. He comes from a distance and he's always here. And I know it's part of his business to see what we're doing, but I'm just glad to see Ryan when he's here.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, Ryan.
Congratulations on this one.
You had a good reason. Uh anything else? All right, seeing nothing else. I've got nothing. Uh my kid's basketball team won, for those of you keeping track. Uh it's pretty good this year. So in any event, thank you very much and I adjourn the meeting. No, we don't have executive today.
No.
Somebody would've told.